So is there anyone in the audience wishing to? Okay, we don't have any public comment. Alright, so we have a couple of things on our agenda today. Renewal of the 2026 insurance rates. I'm gonna saw Ms. Terry earlier. Oh, okay. She was sitting over there earlier. Ms. Terry, you wanna come and queue this up for us? And before we start, Ms. Dr. Rockwell, can you hear us? Would you speak so we could hear you, see if we hear you? Dr. Rockwell, you're muted if you're speaking. Dr. Rockwell, can you hear us? So. Just going out, let you go ahead and try to communicate with her. And you can tell her to use the raise hand feature and I'll try to keep my eye on it. Or I'll need somebody to help me if she wants to interact. But if we're not voting today, so there won't be any votes. I won't have to do a real call voting either. We're just, everything is here as information on discussion purposes between, between. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Ms. Terry. And I'm getting queued up and then hoping that Dr. Rockwell returns.
Thank you. Good afternoon. The reason we're here is that the insurance committee met on Thursday, July 17th. And at that meeting, the Bailey Group reviewed the medical and the prescription plan. And we went, had some discussion and the committee actually said, yes, let's move forward with the prescription plan. However, before we had any further discussion on the medical plan, we wanted to see what the insurance fund balance was so that we could see that before we made any decisions. So we then rescheduled the meeting for July 22nd. And at that time, I went back to the June 5th board meeting, the workshop where Gabby presented the tentative board budget. And in there, it showed that on slide 18, the projected or the estimated fund balance for the insurance fund was fourteen point four three million dollars for 2025. So the Bailey Group once again reviewed all of our data for the medical plans. And ACA, ACA at that time made a motion to have a zero percent increase for the district and for employees. The committee voted on it and it was a deadlock. So we, as the district came up, we made a motion then that we have a three point seven percent increase to both the school board premiums and to the employees. And once again, when we voted it with a deadlock. So it was a tied five to five. So since the committee could not bring forward a recommendation to the board to say, here is what we feel to do for the health fund for the next year, for starting in January of 2026, we decided then, since Dean Bailey Group has not been here to present for several years, we decided to have them come to talk with you in the informal setting at a workshop so that they could present and then answer questions for you. Since that time, on August 12th, Mr. Estevino informed me that right now as of June 30th, our insurance fund balance is about a little over sixteen million dollars. So I'm not going to stand up here any longer. I'm going to introduce to you Mr. Martin Bailey Sr. from the Bailey Group. And we also have Ms. Allison Profit here today. So very glad to be talking with you about the health plan.
Thank you so much. To go through the pattern, assist that super senior board member. Thank you for talking to me. We really appreciate that. We're proud of you. We see the status of the health plan. As you've heard already, there is a lot of good news. And we're going to be definitely, from your perspective, it might not seem like the best news. I can tell you that this year, I've been in the, the, uh, involved with the board in the process of the health plan for forty years now. And this is the most difficult renewal of high performance I've ever experienced. We have two other, two districts that we just presented twenty six percent. We're in 222, one of those other thirty one percent. So we're starting out at a much better level with the district. We have a healthy fund, we're going to talk about that. But the stewardship of the plan has been fantastic from the insurance committee, from the administration. The way decisions have been made through the years, according to the constitution, strategies, panel design, the partners they can choose. And we talked about one of those, with the pharmacy benefit manager, which is a critical component because it's such a large percentage of your overall cost. So the plan has been managed extremely well. And we're looking forward to presenting some additional information to you and getting some guidance from the board as to the decisions on this current year and how we might handle this rate increase that's being recommended. So at this time, I'll introduce Allison Profit to you. We started working with the district back in 2011. And you were fully insured at that time. You were dealing directly with Florida Blue. And we recommended that you move into a self-funded platform and worked on that for about two years. So you've been self-insured since 2013. And it absolutely was the right decision for a lot of reasons. Most important, to be able to keep your benefits, costs to the employees as stable as possible during that time. And Allison's been a big part of that. And one of my key team members who's been with us for eighteen years. It's Allison.
Thank you very much.
So I'm gonna ask, when you come and, if you would speak into the mic to make sure it gets picked up by the recording and if anyone's listening, I'll, we'll be able to hear you, okay, Allison? Thank you.
Hey, is that loud enough? Am I good there?
It doesn't sound like you're speaking into me, but I'm not sure. I'm gonna, what, can you all hear fine? Does it sound like she's, is in the booth up front, up top?
I have to be honest, I'm not a mic speaker generally, so. Okay, okay. All right, so thank you again for having us here today. We are gonna go over a few different items with you. We're gonna start with some financials. Just generally looking at your health spend. This is something we do on a regular cadence with your insurance committee. So we're gonna go over that high level. And then we're going to look at your pharmacy renewal that Mark alluded to. He's gonna go over that with you because that did factor into the renewal that we're presenting from the overall medical funding rates. And then we're gonna look at those rates and that medical renewal. Am I in control of this or?
Who's in control of the call?
I didn't know if it was me. It's me? Okay. All right, I got you. Thank you. So first, we're gonna look at the paid claims report. And this is through June. So your claims are on a calendar year basis. If you understand that your, your plan year is on a calendar year. So it runs from January 1st until December 31st. And the data we're looking at again today is through June. So if we look at our executive summary, I think the most important piece is the current month expense to budget and the plan year expense to budget, which are the two little barometers that you see on the top right-hand side there. So your current month expense to budget is running at seventy nine point four percent. And your plan year expense to budget is ninety six percent. So when we're talking about budget, what we're looking at there is we're taking your current funding rates and loading them in based on your current enrollment. And then that calculates how much funding should be available in the plan and then compares to the actual costs that are running through your fund. And that's gonna be for your health claims, your pharmacy claims, your fixed expenses, and we'll look at that as well. So if we look overall through the first six months, you can see that the budget is around sixteen million and the total plan costs are at fifteen point three seven. So we have a variance there, a positive variance of about six hundred and thirty thousand. And I don't know, should I move through or do you want questions along the way?
I actually want you to tell me what would be better for you. Would it be better for you to go through your presentation and then we come back and do questions? Or do you want questions intermittently or?
I think along the way is probably easier.
All right, so to my colleague, Mr. Vu, do you have a question?
Yes, one thing that really helped me is knowing where we were at the same time last year. You know, basically the past three or five years, if you have that readily available. Because it seems like here we're in the plus six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. But was that also the case last year, year before, et cetera?
Right. Um, let me see if I have. We have it, but do I have it readily available? That's, that's definitely the question. Let me look real quick. Thank you for your patience. So I think I can tell you the prior rolling twelve to the current rolling twelve. So it looks like your current rolling twelve, so that would go beyond the 2025 plan year. The net cost was ten thousand nine hundred twelve per employee per year. And so when we look at that, just to clarify that as well, per employee, we always use that nomenclature. But it's really, you have retirees, as you know, that are enrolled on your plan too. So that includes all of their experience. And then the prior rolling twelve to that, you were at ten thousand two hundred thirteen. So as far as how the budget variance, the current rolling twelve, it's over about one thousand dollars per employee per year. And for the prior rolling twelve, you were over about five hundred and sixty six on a per employee per year basis. So what I will, what I should clarify as well is when we are pulling this data into this reporting, it's not taking into account your funding that is based on your eligibles but not enrolled. And we'll get into that a little bit further when we look at the renewal. But I just wanna clarify because that might seem a little like it doesn't connect the dots. But, but that's why. This is strictly looking at your funding rates and your expenses. Is that helpful?
Yes.
Yeah, we can definitely send over the historical data as well. So we're happy to do that. Any other questions? Okay. All right, so looking at the next page, this is breaking your information down by month. So what you see here, the red line or orange line, however it looks on the screen, that's gonna be your budget amount. So that kinda gives you that quick look to see, is it under, is it over? So you can see at the beginning of the year, January starts out under, which is, you know, not really surprising. That's normal, how you'll normally start out because your deductible start over, your out-of-pocket maximums, everything starts over. So when the green boxes, they're showing you the medical claims. The blue is the pharmacy spend. And then the yellow are the fixed costs. So the fixed costs are gonna be, you know, the amount paid to Florida Blue to administer your plan, the amount paid to Express Scripps to administer your plan. It's also going to include your stop-loss premiums are in there as well. And then when you see like the teal color, those are gonna be negative because those are stop-loss reimbursements. So I don't know if I should, I don't know if I should get into stop-loss a little bit here. But essentially, you have reinsurance on your plan because you are self-funded. So just as you would on your car, your house, you have insurance on your plan. So what that does is we determine a deductible amount. And then anything, any individual that exceeds that deductible, the plan files a claim with the insurance and the plan is reimbursed for the amount over the deductible, just as you would with any other type of claim that you're familiar with as an individual. So there are some, another, just a caveat here. You do see some large stop-loss reimbursements in the last couple of months on this report. That's actually not from this current experience. There was, we did a reconciliation of your, of your stop-loss claims. And we were able to identify some claims that were filed late, like filed late to Florida Blue within the plan. So they weren't captured in the original claim. So we were able to go back and recover those amounts. So that's why that looks larger. And then the pink part you see there are the RX rebates. So that's the amount, and Mark will explain that a little more when we look at the pharmacy benefit manager renewal. So those are rebates you're getting from your, from your experience in your pharmacy plan. So you can see in April, there was five hundred, four hundred and fifty six thousand. And in June, it was a little over a million dollars. Those normally come on about a ninety day cadence, by the way.
Allison, I have a question. Would you, you said teal was stop-loss?
Yeah, it's kind of.
Is that, that's not the line, is it? Or is that, because I was thinking the, I'm having a hard time. I differentiate in the colors.
So the.
Is it dark blue?
Dark blue.
Ah, blue, that's not teal. Okay, I'm sorry, because I was like, wait, I was, I was.
Yes, the dark blue.
The dark blue is, okay.
So underneath, anything underneath is gonna be a reimbursement to the fund. So that's why those are showing negative because the RX rebates essentially are reimbursement to the fund as are the stop-loss recoveries.
And the stop-loss recovery, is that for one particular claim? Or is that, is that if one employee or covered? Say I, as an employee, if I had total medical expenses greater than four hundred thousand dollars, is it for one particular, like, incident? If I was to have one surgery? Or is it all of my medical claims?
It's all of your medical claims.
All of my, thank you.
So it's all in?
Yeah, question two, the budget line, what actually is that figure? It's two point something per month, but it's not like clearly indicated?
It is, I'll have to, I'll have to get the exact amount for you because it calculates underlying calculation with the rates. It just goes by your funding rates, but I can get that for you. But I can tell you that your net cost, including employee contributions, it's around two point two a month on average.
Then would you be able to send us this, like, for the full years? For like the past five years as well? Just so we can see what it actually, a full year looks like instead of just, you know?
Yeah.
You want a full five years or you want one year?
I would want the full five years, but by one year. So for example, like 2000, 2001, 2022, et cetera.
Yeah, so full transparency, this is a new platform for us as far as tracking the cost. I believe we just have a couple of years in this new platform, but we certainly have the prior information. It just may look a little different, so I just wanted to make sure. Okay, okay. The calculation's the same, just may look a little different. All right, anything else? So the next page, and this is another thing that we track and it kind of relates back to stop-loss, obviously, or your catastrophic claims. So catastrophic claims, we usually define as anything that's half of your specific deductible. So you can see on the top left-hand side here, that's four hundred thousand dollars. So again, Allison's on your plan. I end up in the hospital, my bill is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You're gonna pay four hundred. You're gonna get reimbursed the fifty from the stop-loss carrier. And then anything above that will also continue to be submitted. So you'll get reimbursement, anything over that deductible. So what we have here, because we wanted to provide a full-year outlook so you could kind of see how it's running. And this is also something we can give in prior years as well, show you prior years as well. This was the full year of 2024. So those catastrophic claims, anything over two hundred thousand, those totaled four point five million in 2024. And I think we said there were sixteen there. So you have, you know, over about four thousand members on your plan. So sixteen of those cost four point five million towards the fund. So about thirteen percent of your trend. And because a lot of those did not breach your stop-loss deductible, you only had recoveries of a hundred and sixty four thousand. So we always like to say, you know, from a financial perspective only, the fund would rather see a couple of large claimants where you were getting reimbursements. When you get those in the middle is where it really starts hitting your fund balance. And just for an update as well, for 2025, you only have two. Your number one is at four hundred and eighty thousand. So you've gotten about eighty thousand back on that one in particular. And then you don't have another over four hundred. We have a claimant that's at two seventy eight. And again, that's just for the first six months of the year. But you do already have about eleven claimants that are between a hundred thousand and two hundred thousand spend. So those are generally the ones that we see, you know, they'll start to kick up to the top of this report as we, you know, go throughout the second half of the year. Any questions there on large claimants? All right, so I'm gonna switch gears and let Mark discuss the PBM marketing.
Even though I can't see it on the screen. Thank you. Thank you, Allison. As I mentioned previously, it's very important for us to focus on the pharmacy because it does account for a third of your overall expenses at least. And that percentage continues to rise. So over a decade ago, as our firm primarily handles self-funded accounts across the state, we found that we could carve out the pharmacy, which means we didn't keep the pharmacy embedded with the insurance company and go out to a broader market to companies like Optum, PBMs, pharmacy benefit managers, Optum, CVS, Express Scripps, who's your current partner, and drive better value for our clients. And primarily, the differences that we see when we do go out to RFP is in the ingredient costs, which are total gross costs for the plan. And then now in the rebates. The rebates are changing rapidly. And as Allison mentioned, those are funds that are paid from the manufacturers to the pharmacy benefit managers to try to drive utilization in the market in addition to all the ads that you see on TV every evening. And so we make sure that we negotiate the highest rebates we can because in the end, that nets those costs down as low as possible. In this, sorry, in this analysis that you see, in the first column, you've been with Express Scripps for three years. So you're coming out of a three-year contract and we're renegotiating a new three-year contract. We have two major consulting firms that we work with that do go out to the entire market. We did not show you all the results of this because Express Scripps was by far the most competitive. And by staying with Express Scripps, you don't have any disruption with your formulary, with the pharmacies. So it keeps things stable for your associates. And, and they've given us once again, you know, the very best numbers. So this takes your data from three one of twenty four through two twenty eight of twenty five. And ask, the consultants are asking the different PBMs to give us their very best numbers based on that utilization. So it's taking your drug mix, your overall spend, which you can see on the top line there is eleven point two million during that time period. There are some dispensing fees in each one of these. The member contribution, those, that line item are the costs that your employees and dependents are paying for the drugs. Their co-pays are a part of that, that line item. And we do keep an eye on that and make sure that the impact on the, your associates is not too high. Of course, you want, and the overall plan design, that's very important because there's a lot of activity there. And then one of the big differences here, when we went out to market, when you look at the second column, you can see that the rebates went from two point eight million to four point six million. The ingredient costs with the same mix and same spend went from eleven point two to ten point eight, or almost ten point nine. However, the Florida legislature passed SB 1550 last year, which impacts this renewal, which requires full transparency from the PBMs, which means they can't take any margins from the ingredient costs. They can't take any margins from the rebates, have to pass everything through. But it does impact the costs for plans that are, particularly for school districts and governmentals. And in this case, it did have an impact of about two hundred thousand dollars in your savings because the final renewal that we've negotiated is in the third column. But we've been able to negotiate a twenty six point six reduction in costs. So almost two million dollars. That means if your spend is the same as it was during that time period, then this is what we would expect. Your spend won't be the same, your ingredient costs will go up. There were a lot of specialty drugs hitting the market. We just have to make sure that going into this year and then going into each new contract year that we negotiate the very best rates within that contract possible. And again, the main feature are the rebates. However, you can see, you have an admin fee here. They're taking all those margins out, they're pushing it down to that line item. We have factored this into the renewal that you'll see from the actuaries that Allison will present, the recommendation on the increase in the funding rate. So without this, that number that we would, that we're going to give you would have been probably seven percent higher. So I'll pause there. I know this is a lot of information. Happy to answer any questions.
So I had one question, Mark, if I could. I was looking at this last night. And so I was wondering what the three columns were. And I follow what you're saying, those are like three iterations of the same data. And in the third column or the one to the right, the one twenty six renewal, I was wondering, but I think you've just, you just answered it. There was a pass-through admin fee as well as the PM, PM admin fee.
Right. So the PM, PM admin fee has been there. That is the fee that the consultant charges for allowing us to be in the coalition, which has millions of lives.
Okay.
And when you look at a PBM like Express Scripps, there are different consortiums and coalitions out there that have different contracts with every pharmacy benefit manager. So what we're trying to do as your consultant is make sure we can find the most competitive one. Some of them have a fee that they are transparent about. Most of them hide that fee within some of the other rebate numbers that are reduced or ingredient costs that are increased. We prefer to have that fee clear and outlined by the consulting firm that we work with. The four fifty seven is a new transparency cost that comes with SB 1550 that we can't do anything about. That middle column would have been your renewal. Now with that new legislation, the recommendation and really the only option is that we, rather we switch pharmacy benefit managers or not, we have to comply with this. So you're going to see that line item. So supposedly, the way this should work is that Express Scripps would take all their profit margins out of the, the account, out of, out of this plan and charge that amount. It was in there before, it was just embedded in all the numbers and no one knew what it was. We don't love this legislation just because in the end. Now, one of the things that we did have our consultant do, you'll notice, the rebates were four point six. They didn't negotiate them up to four point nine because you're getting hit with this four hundred and fifty seven thousand dollar additional fee. So they've been trying to work with us. We have a lot of accounts with Express Scripps. And they've been working with us to try to offset the impact of this legislation.
Can I ask a question? So the pharmacy manager that's getting this money, the total over seven hundred thousand dollars between those two, is that Express Scripps?
Well, the four fifty seven is Express Scripps.
Okay, and the three oh nine?
Three oh nine is, is Crumdale, that runs the coalition.
Because that's what they're getting.
Right, and what they do, they're stewards of the plan so they make sure that they have minimum guarantees in the rebates here. I just was on a meeting with UF Health on the way here with, with those consultants and the ESI team. They make sure that they go through all the performance on a six-month basis, that they're meeting their contractual obligations, recommending programs when you're having, have spend that might be getting out of control in certain areas. So they serve a dual role with us as a consultant, but also being able to access this coalition that they've built through the years that has millions of members, which drives the best pricing.
Well, I think, I mean, Express Scripps is, I'm a nurse. So Express Scripps has been, I think, almost everybody has used that in some way or another. But when you're talking about rebates, you're talking. But when you're talking about rebates, you're talking about, we might not be paying for it, but it's coming, like as the consumer, it'll say $0. But essentially, that's the rebate embedded into that drug that Express Scripps then is putting in this. And so we don't think we're paying for it, but we are paying for it. That's essentially what they're doing, yeah. They're disguising it in that way. So your consultant is Crum, this is, so they're the ones that say Express Scripps is the most competitive and the best fit for us, correct?
Well, they go out to market for us with Welldine, I didn't mention Welldine, CVS, Optum, all the major right way, all the major.
Pharmaceutical companies, well, right.
And they provide that information to us. We did not show you that entire spreadsheet, and then we go through that, and we go through another step with them to go back and negotiate with the top three, and then we end up with the finalists. Express Scripps has been by far the most competitive. We haven't had one of our larger self-funded accounts move from them in the past couple of years.
And I also noticed on the claims, that some catastrophic claims, some of the ones that are really high up there, we have a lot of people on cancer therapeutics, anti-neoplastics, and so those cost a lot of money. And that's, some drugs are, they're still patented, you can't get generics on any of those. So who makes the determination if a cancer drug is accepted to be paid for or not? Or is there, because sometimes patients cannot get the drug because their pharmaceutical company or their pharmacy won't cover it, or their insurance company won't cover it. So who gives that list of drugs that's acceptable or not?
Well, the formulary from the PBMs changes every six months. The drugs move around to different tiers. We, of course, want as many of those tier two and tier three drugs to move into a generic category. We have a lot of those changes coming this year, drugs that are moving into a biosimilar category, which has a much lower cost. Ultimately, we're not seeing situations, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Allison, where any particular specialty drug is being denied by the PBM. But you're right, I mean, the costs are, we just have, we have a claim we're working on right now, a gene therapy drug that's three and a half million, three and a half million dollars.
Right, yeah, so, I mean, I don't know if there's something in place that the doctor can appeal, or if there's an appeal process for these patients. But I think a lot of them are based on their diagnoses, which a lot are cancer diagnoses and that. So Express Scripps, you're recommending that they're the best for us to use.
Absolutely, and that's who we, within our firm, use with United Healthcare as our medical provider. But there are programs, step therapy programs, that do require certain drugs to be approved if there are other drugs that they feel like are lower cost and have the same efficacy. And so we have to make sure we have those programs in place so that we can do the best we can to, you know, control costs overall. But I do believe absolutely they're your best option, and there's no disruption of that for your team.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
I don't have any. Mr. Voo, do you have anything? Dr. McNeeley, do you have anything?
Okay, thank you.
Right, so we'll go on into the renewal analysis now. So we wanted to start out just giving a little bit of history on the recommended and accepted renewal increases. You can see in 2022, there was a 2%, 23, it was up to 5.17, 24, 4.2, 25, 3.7. And then 2026 is proposed, which was originally the 14.49%. So the 14.49 is what our actuaries, we submit all the data to them, and they do the calculation, and they look at how much funding do you need to get you through for your medical claims, your pharmacy claims and your expenses to get you through 2026. So they come up with a 14.49%. You all do things a little differently with some opt-out funding, so we're going to talk about that. But that assists you in your overall funding rates. So we're essentially able to net that funding rate increase down to a 7.35. So when we look at the breakdown here, you can see if we start on the left-hand side, you have two plans, you have a $1,500 deductible plan and a $2,500 deductible plan. That is as of 2025, prior to this year, you had a third plan, which was a $750 deductible plan, which it was decided on to sunset that plan moving forward to this year. But those individuals and those claims are still taken into account when we look at the forecast. So if we look at your renewal count, you can see most of your individuals are employee-only in the $1,500 deductible plan. And then you have the $2,500 deductible plan, still, most of those individuals are employee-only coverage. Not surprisingly, the reason you have that high skewing of the ratio is because your employee-only coverage is free. You also, I believe, offer it down to, and Tara can correct me, four hour employees, 18 and a half, is that what they're? You're very generous in what's allowed to be eligible to be on the health plan. So you do get a lot of just individuals at least on the plan. So the next, after the renewal count are the current funding rates. So those are the funding rates I alluded to initially that help us determine what that budget is going to be for the year. So those are your current funding rates, and they are by plan and tier. In particular, you all have always held the funding rate the same for employee-only tier. And again, that goes back to because it's fully subsidized by the health fund. So when we multiply that out and look at annualized cost for 2025, and this would have been, those funding rates were set, you know, this time in 2024, right? So it was a projection. So those were projected that you would need 32 million. So if you look at our 16, we're pretty close on the money there from a projection standpoint. So our current rates give us 32 million, and that's to cover all of the cost. If you look at the renewal employee count, there's 3,200. And so the per employee per month average is $833.45. So that's at current rates. So once they get all of the information, they have claims, all of your claims data, they have census data. So if anything has changed in your census, they look at that as well and adjust. They look at any plan changes and to see if they need to make any adjustments there. So when they ran all of that data, they ran expecting claims that will be needed through 2026 of 36.6 million. So when they're looking at those claims, they are trending that forward. So they're going to, I think we ran these through March, we had March claims when we ran the renewal, I believe. So they're trending, if they're using a 7% trend, they're compounding that for the entire 21 months to get us through to the end of 2026. So I just wanted to make that clear as well. So then that information, that gets us down the 36.6 at the 3,200 employee count to the 9,542, which is a difference of 14.49% from the 8,33. So that is just the straight renewal calculation. When the actuaries are looking at your information, they are not looking at any additional funding that may be coming into the plan. They are strictly looking at the funding rates. And they are also not looking at any fund balance that you all may have available. So they are strict, they just strictly want to know, do your rates, are they high enough to support the expenses that are expected for the coming year? So that's what they're looking at when they are calculating the required increase.
The employee number that you have here that you say 1126, that was from April? That's where you got the numbers for the employees? So what about additional employees that we've hired, or where's this number coming from?
So these would have been, and again, I believe it was from March or April, these counts. And this is the projection for 1126 is why that data is there. This will fluctuate, so that 36.6 may not be 36.6 exactly. But I can tell you, your mix and your enrollment has really not changed.
So we lose and gain pretty equal.
Exactly, exactly. And that's, you know, obviously, that's, the renewal count today is not going to be the same as it will be tomorrow. It does fluctuate. But you all have been pretty steady from that regard. So what you all have that not all organizations have is you, and this would be a finance decision, I assume at some point, you all have been doing this, to my knowledge, since I've been working with you on your plan since about 2011 I have been involved. So the opt-out funding, you take individuals who are eligible for your plan, but not enrolled in the plan. And you do apply some funding, you accrue funding every month. It's $375 was the last information that I was provided on those individuals. So when we project that on about an average of 508 individuals, now again, that's going to change, right? That number's going to fluctuate. We estimated about 2.286 million in additional funding to infuse into the plan to help cover the expenses. So we need 36.6. We know we're going to get that 2.2 from the opt-out funding because that doesn't change. The 375 has nothing to do with plan experience. So we can net that down off of the 36.6. That gets us to the 34.3 that you see here. So if you add those numbers together, that whole number we need is, 36.6 is the goal. So then if we net that out, the 34.3 gives us an 894.71 renewal PPM, which brings it down to 7.35%. So that's kind of how that works out to support the renewal from the opt-out funding. And again, these are people who, you know, they may come on the plan during the year, they may not. But they are eligible for the plan, they just don't happen to be enrolled. So when you look at, you can see the difference, you know, these are the rates then that would go in. So that 732, the current $1,500 single rate, goes to 786. And then the same, you know, the same cadence across, the 1437 goes to 1542. Any questions, other questions there?
I just have one question. So on the, let's just take the $1,500 deductible with the employee and spouse. So you're projecting that their premium, that they're going to have to pay, is going to go up to 1645? Is that what you're saying, if it was the 14.4% increase?
Correct.
Okay, so that is bimonthly, I mean, that's total for the month.
That's total, yes.
Okay, so they're going up over 200 and some dollars or $100 per paycheck if they, is that correct?
So that would be, that number is the full funding rate. So that's the other thing the actuaries don't really.
So that's 14%? Is that the 14.4%?
Yes, so that, who pays for that is up to you all, right? Like, does the board or the health fund pay for it, do the employees pay for it? But that's the total rate.
That's what, it's projected.
Yes. But again, with the subsidy from the opt-out funding, we're able to back that down to the 1542. So if we look at the next page, I know that Ms. Terry mentioned that, you know, we had some discussions with the insurance committee around what increase should be applied or recommended. So we wanted to show the different options here if you do different, in different scenarios, depending on how much you increase the rates by. So I'll just kind of go through, I'll go through the 7.35% renewal, which is what the actuaries would recommend if we netted out the opt-out funding. So if you look on the left-hand side there, the 2025 rates from funding, again, from the prior slide, is about 32 million. The total rates, the total rates that we would be looking at, the funding we would be receiving from the opt-out funding would be 34.3. So the increase from the rates, so the amount that would come from the rates increase would be 2.3 million. The opt-out funding of the 2.2 is covering the rest of that increase. So at that rate, you would not have to draw down your fund balance at all because the funding, and again, that's coming, whomever that is coming from, either the health fund, the board, or the employees, 2.3 million would be required with an additional 2.2 coming from the opt-out funding. So obviously, when you start to, when you don't take the increase that's required, you're going to have to dip into the fund balance. So if we look at, for instance, the 5% increase, that, if we'd only did a 5% increase on those funding rates that we looked at on the prior page, we wouldn't get 34.3, we would get 33.6. So that is a difference of 1.6 million in the funding rates totals. We still have our opt-out funding, but now there's a shortage there because we didn't take the whole 7.35%. So that shortage is going to come from the fund balance drawdown, and that total is going to be $752,000. So all of this is still, we're still bottom line, we need to get to the 36.6 to cover all of the claims and expenses. It's really just shifting, where does that come from? So if you take the full renewal, it's only coming from two places. It's coming from the rates and it's coming from the opt-out funding. When we start decreasing that, it's coming from the rates, the opt-out funding, and the fund balance. So I believe it was mentioned, it was around 16 million is your fund balance. So I did want to just make a quick mention about that. As a self-funded plan, you're required to file with the state every year with the Office of Insurance Regulation to essentially show that your plan is financially sound. So showing that your rates and your reserves are enough to cover your expenses. So that's submitted every year, and they send a letter back that says, okay, you're approved, your expenses are covered, it looks good. What they require is about 60 months of claims, 60 days of claims, sorry, two months, 60 days of claims. That is the bare minimum that they require with the filing. That does not include an incurred but not reported liability that has to be booked as a liability within your AFR, every year we update that amount. But we would always recommend, we feel like about six months of claims is probably a fair amount. And just really based on the fact that we are seeing so many of these pharmaceuticals, to your point, you know, it's not unusual to have individuals with pharmacy claims that are 30, 40, $50,000 a month. So, you know, those can add up really fast. So we do feel like there's, you know, you need more of a cushion. The 60 days is really slim, a slim margin, right? So that's where I think, you know, the decision would have to be made. How much do you want to draw down from the fund balance? Mark and I both have been in positions where organizations have, or educational organizations have not selected to increase. And we have filed with the state, and their filing was not accepted. And we had to present a plan to reconcile, to rectify that fund shortage. And we had to do two years of 12% increases. So we're a little sensitive to that, just to be honest. That's kind of, that was a rough go to get that turned around.
I have a question about those counties where they were rejected. So basically, what was that ratio to the fund balance, the planned cost that was rejected by the state for these counties or these school districts?
They were actually negative at that point, they had barred from the general fund.
Oh, okay, so not the case we're in then?
No, not at all, not at all. I mean, you all are definitely, you know, your fund balance is in a good position at this point, certainly, through your fiscal year end.
Is it true that if you, at some point, if that doesn't work, what you had to do, a recovery plan, that they can force you to not be self-insured then and direct you to use an outside company?
They can certainly, they will push back to the school board, honestly, to say that you've got to make an arrangement that is, you know, you can't keep drawing down the funding to negative. So you would have to flip to a fully insured arrangement at that point. And then you don't have a choice, you know, you have to pay the premium, right? I mean, you do have to pay your claims because everyone needs coverage.
It's just a loss of your own funds.
Yeah, and you all clearly, again, we started working with you in 2011, you were fully insured at that point. You were running well, and frankly, Florida Blue is keeping the difference. So, you know, this 16 million that you've been able to build up is money that would have gone to the is money that would have gone to the insurance company had you not been self-funded.
So what do, if we, if I asked you what you recommended, a six-month fund balance would be based on our projections, what would you say we should keep in our, in our fund balance?
So if you look at.
If we're doing the best, six months, what would it be?
So if you look at the projected, you know, we say our, we projected 32 million for this year. We seem to be right on track.
Right.
So 16 million would be right.
Would be right there, right?
Yeah. If we look at, you know, where we're projected to be through next year at 36.6, that starts to inch up a little bit.
Okay, so this is not too much money to having a fund balance, based on what you're saying, that you should ideally keep a six-month fund balance?
I mean, that's, that's our perspective ideally. It's not, again, you know, that's not mandated by any means and, you know.
No, I know that, but I'm just, you're the expert. So that's what you do all day long.
Yeah, correct.
So to really protect us, this is what you would say. I mean, we all understand, two months would be the minimum, six months would be the best to protect us and to have the, not have it get in jeopardy.
Right.
I mean, we've had it for 11, what, since 2011, so.
2013.
2013, okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
And then, um, just, sorry, someone else.
Go ahead.
So it's clear that we built up a fund balance because basically our, you know, what we budgeted versus actual costs, there has been like a difference over time, right? Every single year. Can you possibly send that five, 10 years? What, what it's been for every year to us as well? Because we're only seeing, or actually, we're not seeing any of that information even for the last year.
Your fund balance?
Yeah, so basically, in terms of each year, what has the plan cost been versus what actually has been budgeted?
Yeah, I believe that the finance department should be able to. We can work with them to get that information.
All right, thank you. Yeah.
All right, so I, my questions, I think, were kind of related to you and you've already covered all my concerns. We've gotten through what we thought would be the recommended fund balance, why there was this huge difference between what the actuary, the 14% and the 7% that's been covered, and our options as to their percentage increase and where the funding would come from. So we've got, we, we do have to have that and we know the OIR requires 60 days, which, which is probably right at $2 million.
You're about 2.5, it's more like 5 million.
So 2.5 a, a month instead of 2 million a month. So, okay, so about 5 million is bare minimum. But we also were shown the list where we've got the claims that are falling in that. I'm going to call it that little gap area where they're high, but not high enough to cover the 400, you know, the stopgap. So that means that we're paying all of those, you know, out of the plan until they, yeah, until they get more. But, so that's the, the, the thing, it's, it's of really trying to manage that. I'm, I'm, I think my colleagues all know that I'm not, I'm, I'm not one to, to cut things really closely because when you start getting into the point where you don't have a lot of reserves around and something happens, then, and the state comes in, you don't have options. So, yeah, so trying to manage through where we would go. That, that red line down there, that fund balance drawdown line is the one that we have to figure out where we'd like to be in that, so. You have anything else? So we had some public input. We called for it at the beginning of the meeting, we didn't have any, and I see you all are here now. And I would, you, would you like, you have something you'd like to say?
I have one more question.
Okay. So Ms. Ward, before you come, Mr. Fu has one other question, but you can go ahead.
Oh, one thing I, I noticed here too is you do give us a projected cost based on, you know, the, the data from March 24 through April, sorry, February 25. And it does show what the expected prescription plan cost would be for us. What's the actual change in the medical costs?
You mean, you're talking about medical claims?
Yes, because it's not explicitly stated in terms of like what's the projected is.
So I think they use a 7%.
They just say it's a 7% gain.
Yeah, but it would, again, it would be compounded, so, to get us through the end of, at the end of 2026. And, you know, you always, and, and it's a good point, you always kind of have to pick a snapshot in time, right? Because you, you have to make decisions, you have to budget. And certainly, things could change. But the nice thing about having a mature self-funded plan is you just don't see, you don't see the fluctuations. The makeup, the demographic of your population really hasn't changed. You know, educational organizations tend to be heavy female. All of that's taken into effect, into account when they're looking at, at your projections. So, you know, we feel, they look at all of your experience and your trend over time. So we feel confident that what they're projecting is, is an accurate measurement.
And just before, would it be accurate to say then, this estimation you're giving us includes a $2.2 million savings in the prescription plan, but a 7% increase in the actual medical costs itself?
We did incorporate the savings from the.
Oh, in the, in the 7%. So what's the actual, taking out the prescription savings? What's the actual projected increase in costs and just medical expenses, not prescription?
I can, yeah, I can get that for you. I have that. It's, it's part of the calculation, I just don't have the detailed calculation, right?
Right, thank you.
Definitely, yeah.
So. One thought before the public comments. It, you do build up this reserve for times where, you know, obviously, everybody's worried about the associates, you have high inflation right now. It, it is there to help you through some of these difficult times. And this one, as I mentioned earlier, is not as difficult as a lot that we're dealing with, which concerns me in the longer term. But as Allison mentioned, your, your expenses from year to year have been very stable. One of the most stable of any of the clients that we represent. We have over 300 accounts. But we can, whatever decision you make to dip into this at any amount, and then how you're going to share that with the, the employees, again, is your call along with the committee's recommendations, of course. We have to be cognizant that, you know, we're going to, we keep up with this every month, but if we see some of these increases coming, as we are in the other plans, then you're going to have to take more drastic action with plan design and contributions in the next year. But I, I don't have a lot of heartburn with using some of this right now to help buffer the increase a little bit, I think is my message.
Thank you. I did have one question. I know there was a change in the plans from the 750 plan to the $1,500 plan, and there was that HRA card. Will that continue in the future? And the cost of that card to the organization, is that included in the pricing that you've done here?
It's funded here, is it not, in the actuarial? It's separate? Sorry, I was wrong. Okay.
So, yeah, turn, okay, so you said it's budgeted?
So it's normally, we're, our understanding is that that's budgeted for separately. And it can fluctuate, I mean, that determination of how much that is, is that, you know, the board's discretion to decide how much that is funded per employee?
I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit confused, so. That if we're, if we continue that, the $750, that's, that's an expense to the board, correct? If we, if we forward.
You voted, you voted it.
We voted it down. I'm sorry, not voted it.
But it's not part of?
It's not a.
No, no, turn, turn your mic on, because that's what I, that's my question I'm asking. If we had the $1,500 plan, what's, so I guess that, that card that we receive, the HRA, the $750 on the card was for 25. Will that continue into '26 is my question, plan year '26?
We did not, we didn't project for any plan changes, so I would assume that they would, that that.
Okay, so since we're projecting, since that would continue in the future, the cost of that $750 to employees, I'm asking, where is that considered in here?
It's not in those rates.
That's something they can. Isn't that something they can opt in or opt out? That's like a benefit that you can have.
I believe, and I can't really speak on behalf of your finance department. When, when you're, when you have availability of those funds, you don't have to use it, right? So you're just paying them as they come along. So as people incur claims, the plan is, or the board is paying those claims. So as they're using their card for copays and things like, the deductibles and things like that. So I'm not sure, I've, I've just been told that, that was, that's normally budgeted separately.
And I can tell you, those costs won't change much. Whatever we find in that line item, they're pretty stable from year to year. And the, the advantage of the HRA is that they're employer dollars that are funded, as Allison mentioned, when the claim is incurred, rather than HSA funds that are given to the employees and they can take them with them. But you're only going to, to fund what has been spent. We typically see, if we take $750 times each participant that has that plan, we typically see about 60% of those funds used on average. But we, we'll drill down and get that number for you. But there hasn't been any discussion about making a change in that. I think it's an important part of the plan design.
Can I ask you another question? Since you say you manage over 300 accounts? Okay, so how many of those accounts that you have that the employees receive free health insurance like this, that our employees pay nothing for their health? The, the employee pays nothing. How many of those accounts do you have like that?
Well, if you look at the entire book of business, it's a fairly low percentage. If we drill down to governmentals and school districts, tend to see probably more than half have at least some plan that is free. It typically is a high deductible plan, maybe an HSA plan that, that is being offered, or, or a very low contribution. So, I mean, and that private sector is completely different.
Right.
I, I think that's probably about right if I look at all of our groups.
Right.
I think that that's one of the biggest benefits we have for our employees is no health insurance for an employee. I mean, certainly, they have the option to have it for that, but I think that's a huge benefit for. I, I work in a private school and we don't have that. And I used to work here in the district and I loved it, but I also had a family plan too. So I think that's what draws people to come here. Number one is the health insurance. But it also has to be affordable, especially for the bus drivers and for people that are working for the health insurance. So I totally get it. I mean, we're caught between a rock and a hard place. And I'm also like, I'm certain I want to be fiscally responsible. We have to be good stewards for the money. We can't just use it thinking, oh, nothing's going to happen. Because in healthcare, I see catastrophic events all the time. So I know how quickly it can change. We're very lucky, if you look at the demographics and what the type of things our people have had, it's very low. I mean, it's really low overall when you think of what can happen. Car accident, $5 million later, you're in the hospital if it's a catastrophic injury. So I think that we also have to think about that too, about being good stewards for our money also, since we're self-insured.
And it's a big picture in the governmentals. I mean, they've got lower compensation, so you're right. I mean, all of our governmentals are really focused on their benefits because it helps attract and retain.
I, I agree with, uh, member playback and just on those comments. And, um, I mean, it's actually in the employee contract anyway to where they're, we have to offer a no-cost plan. So there, I imagine that wouldn't change and I imagine that would be the $2,500 deductible plan. But do you mind going back one slide? I did, I did notice something to slide 10. Is that possible, please?
You have to go back a slide.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
That's okay.
Go back one slide. But, uh. I just noticed that between the two plans, the 1,500 deductible and the 2,500 deductible, the, when it comes to the employee only, the expected claims is the same for both? Regardless, even though one, technically, the employee would be paying a lot more before they would have to, you know, they would have to have more out-of-pocket expenses in the $2,500 version. Can you just give me some context to why the expected claims for both are the same?
Sure, sure. They take that information and they smooth it out. And that is just strictly based on the fact that you all contribute the same amount to every employee. So because of that, we cannot have a difference there that has to be passed on. So the actuaries know that and they take that in front, take all of the claims and kind of smooth that out. So, yeah, you would have some subsidy is probably what you're thinking between the two, and that's why.
I just mean that like, if you look at every other group, you know, plus spouse, plus children, plus family for the $1,500 deductible, because the plan, you know, or we, you know, the self-insurance just inherently would be paying more for claims. It's, it is greater for every single group except employee only.
Right.
So that's just why, like, I'm a bit confused as to why that would be the case, other than the fact that maybe single people aren't as likely to meet the deductible even when it's $1,500, you know?
It's, it's literally just smoothing out all of the claims and they have tier relativities. But they have to handle yours a little different because of the fact that you only fund that one amount no matter where the person is enrolled. So in the past, you did have a plan, the $750 deductible plan that was in effect last year, it did have a higher rate. And then there was a contribution required from the employees. But since both of these plans are free, we have to smooth out that expense to make sure that the employees aren't having to carry any of that burden on that tier.
I have one other thought.
Well, sorry, sorry, you said both of these would be free, but ultimately, that would be up to the district, right? Like us.
They just currently are today. I'm just.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are today. They don't have to be, they do not have to be, correct?
Okay, so like, so maybe this is best question for our folks then. Like, if these are the two plans we're going to offer employees and ultimately, they're no cost to employees and we're not going to apply a cost of a lower deductible plan, what really is the material difference between the two, aside from the fact that you pay more out-of-pocket for one?
I think with one of them, the, if I'm recalling correctly, the high, the 2,500 plan, you get the funds on the card and they get accumulated. And I don't know if they're portable, but I think they're portable. So that, that's the difference in the plan, I think, is that you're accumulating funds.
Okay, so it's just the, literally the, the WEX card, got it?
I mean, there are some people who, when I first started, that that was a benefit for them to accumulate those dollars on that, on that card from year to year and not have to contribute anything. So that's the difference in that.
There's one other aspect.
Yes, Mark.
I know you're.
Go ahead.
The actuaries will look at population in these plans as well. And if there's a small population in a particular plan like that, they're not credible because one hundred thousand dollar claim or quarter million dollar claim can throw the funding rates off. So they'll tend to combine the population of the total. But we can give you the breakdown of the per employee, per year costs of each one of those. And you'll actually see that in some of the reports that we're going to send you.
Thank you.
So I'd like to thank Mark and Allison for that. We'll take public comment now, if there's.
Oh, this one?
Go ahead and queue up at the, so I'm going to ask that you please not injure yourself in here.
Twist my ankle on the way up. Good afternoon, I'm Carmen Ward. If you don't know me, I am the chair of the insurance committee from the meetings that we just had. And I just want to give a little bit of background. I know this is an informal meeting and thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I appreciate that. Dr. Patton and Chair Certain. But the union portion of the insurance committee is promoting a 0% increase because of the vast fund balance in the insurance program. It is, as Ms. Terry, I appreciate her sharing $16 million at the moment. And we decide this every year. This, we do not need to be thinking, what's this going to do five years in the future? Because literally, we decide this every single year. And I do want to like, give a little history about the insurance committee. We've negotiated that. Even though compensation, all compensation is a mandatory subject of negotiations, we have made a process in our district to have our very complicated insurance discussions monthly so that we can make a recommendation to the school board. We have, if you will, waived some of our power because it's a lot to bring to a bargaining table. But I want to make it really clear, retirees will be hurt. The general fund will be depleted if we increase our rate. And employees that have children are going to be hurt. I came under a lot of fire from employees last year because we did not get a good raise, but they got their increase of insurance, 3.7%. And I guess my time is up, but thank you for hearing that in this informal meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak before we move on? If, um, go ahead, please, if you all would, would queue up there. If, um, go ahead, please, if you all would queue up there.
Hello, Crystal Testman. Just want to reiterate that currently, it's a contractual right for our ESPs and teachers to have a 0% plan for themselves. And echoing what Ms. Ward said about how much our employees with children will be hurt by an increase, and echoing what Ms. Playback said about how important this benefit is to our employees, especially our lowest-paid employees. And we've heard time and time again, we're not giving such a big raise, but they have free health insurance. It needs to stay that way. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. If there's no other public comment, I'm going to bring it back to the board for us to sort of discuss this, have some discussion.
I just want to take two seconds and thank the company. Did, I appreciate your time with me this past week too. And just as we had talked, it was interesting, they had not been here for a while. So I think it was really helpful for us just to stop and really have five board members really understand more, and myself, to this specific issue. So thank you for all your time leading up to this and being here today.
Yes, thank you.
I just, I just need some clarity on contractual rights.
So, I don't, but let me ask Attorney Delaney, are we, is this permissible? To...
So sure, there, I mean, I, I don't recommend that we get into a back and...
Clarify, clarify.
I, I can't. No, ma'am. I, I, I don't know exactly what's meant by that. But my general advice would be that it's not helpful to get in a back and forth with public commentators.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify the definition of contractual right, what that...
So...
I don't understand that.
In, in this context, I think it's referring to a portion of the contract, and that's a right that the employees have. I'm not aware of what particular provision of the contract was being referenced when saying there's a contractual right not to have an increase. That's not my understanding of how the contract works.
And I, I refer to the attorney because I don't want us to get into the back and forth as well...
No, I agree.
No, 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 as far as the bargaining type thing, right? So I don't, that's, so...
I can send you any more.
Okay. All right. So, but I do think the, the purpose of our workshop and us having these meetings where there's no action taken is, but it is for us to be able to talk in a form that is permissible by law. And I'm not sure if you all have any feedback or anything we'd like to, you know, any discussion you'd like to have. And I'll, I'll start with you all and then I'll get mine.
I mean, we're left with a bunch of bad choices, right? There's really no great choices we have. It really either is have our employees bear the full brunt of these in costs, and it really would be those with spouses, children, covering their families, because as of now, in the instructional bargaining agreement, and with the ESPs, that, that there is a no-cost plan that should be available for, if you're just covering yourself. And so that really is the choice I feel like we have. Do we make folks with families bear the increase in these costs, right? I'm really of the mind that considering where everything is today, considering how difficult teaching is today, considering, you know, inflation, I, I think we do have a healthy fund balance. I, I'm in favor of a no-cost increase right now for just this next year, only because of that. I, I do think, again, it's, to me, the most palatable bad choice that we have. And we are in a better position than most of the districts, just considering the insurance fund balance. It's just where I am right now.
Thank you, Mr. Voo. Dr. Maitland, you have anything?
I appreciate the workshop today, hearing all about the rates, the renewals, the fund balance. And I think I'm probably the only one on this board that has to have so much insurance. When I've been to three different doctors this week already, and it's only Wednesday, so that tells you, I was with two on one day and one on the other. But I am very concerned at all times about our retirees and what they face. That's the majority of the calls that I have received, based on the rates, the increases and, and whatsoever. But I have a procedure that I just found out about today that will take place in two weeks. And so I'm hesitating and hoping that Florida Blue will come through. The first thing every physician said to me this week, we have to wait to see if you're approved. And so, so therefore, I'm a little bit nervous, but I hear my colleague saying that we need to hold on to the healthy fund balance that we do have. If we were making a vote today, I probably would do something. I'm not going to say which one. But it's important that we don't go under and, and that we still offer every single employee the best that we can give when it comes to this scope and sequence. Thank you very much.
I'd like, Ms. Terry, if you could tell us or find out how many retirees we have on our insurance, I think that's very helpful to know. And if there's projected to be more, because obviously, that's, that's really important, even though they have Medicare. Do you guys, in our insurance, I'm not sure, do you cover the 20%? If Medicare, can they opt out as a secondary, or does it have to stay as their primary if they're retired and over the age of 65?
Would you turn your mic on, Allison, please?
My girl. If they're retired and over the age of 65, you all would be secondary.
So we would be secondary. So that's, that's important, because 20% of $500,000 is a lot of money. So that's important to be able to carry that, if they have that. So I'd love to know what, how many retirees we have on the health insurance. I think that's really important, to know that. And I think this is something we really have to really, really, really think about, because there are a lot of people in this district that rely on our health insurance. And again, I, also, we have to be good stewards. So it's, it's caught between a rock and a hard place, it really is. But I appreciate that. But I would like to know how many retirees. Thank you.
All right. So I have some of the same concerns that you all have. But I want to kind of like bring us back to know that the funding of health insurance has to come out of all of our operational funds, right? So we have this fund balance over there, and then we have our, the money we get in for FEFP, and that has to pay all of our operating expenses, any salary increases, health insurance costs that are not coming, because everything, we, we have a fund balance, a, a reserve in the health insurance fund that is $16 million or so. But we can't just hit on that because of the requirement for that, right? So we really have to balance out what's in the general fund and what's here. And so as this is part of my whole stump every year, that I say that our, the cost of operations is increasing at a faster rate than our funding through FEFP. And, and so when you have the, the, yes, we have our local discretionary money, the millage is 748, the .748, and then we have the required local effort, the, the, you know, the rate that we apply to our local tax base, and that may increase some bit by, by the increase in property values that may be a little bit more, you know, the new stuff that's coming on. But the gist of it all is, we've got to do all of this here out of that one pot of money. There, there's just no other way around it. And so, in looking at where we are and, and where we, where we're required to be, the, the actuary has their estimate, and they're not really looking at fund balance, we've been told. And then we, we have our actual fund balance, and it's been, you know, said that we can kind of come in the, in the middle. I, I think that if, if the self-insurance fund balance goes down too low or can't meet their obligations, you would have to look to general fund, right? And so that by state statute, we have to keep a minimum of 3% in our gear, but board policy is at 5%. So you kind of got all of this, it's this, not as much wiggle room as you think you have. And so I think we just have to give some thought to, of, of what, what a true impact of a 0% increase means. And you have to, you have to consider what is the worst-case scenario that could happen based on if you come in. So we, we, there's no vote that's taken today, but you all have the information. If you have additional questions or concerns, those are things we can run through finance. We have a staff person here. I don't, I can't, is it Tara?
Tara, yes.
Tara. Do you have anything you'd like to add or share with the board in your experience in, in the office there, that when this comes before us, I'd like to, to give you a space to, to share with us now?
Yeah, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have much additional to add onto what the Bailey Group. I did want to clarify an earlier comment about the 1,500 versus the $2,500 deductible plan and the WEX card. That is on both plans. It is for the $2,500 plan, per individual, up to $1,500. And the $1,500 deductible plan is a set 750. But both plans do offer that carry over year to year, not just the one plan.
Both, awesome. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Okay. Yes, Dr. Patton?
Just a couple of quick comments. So although we here owe $16 million, our costs are estimated this year at $32 million. So that's about half of that. Just kind of remembering that this is not $16 million sitting here. This is based on the funding that we still have to pay out through the end of December. So I want to kind of have you think back in your mind, when you saw that, one of those first slides with the dashboard, it said on the right side, 96%. So about 96% of what we set aside for this, we actually spend. So I just want to point that out, because we are, we're not putting excess amount of money in here, we're actually using what we put in. So when we don't put enough in, then it hits our general fund. I also want to remind people too, that when you, people look and, listen, whether it's $200,000 we can save, a half a million, a million, 1.3, whatever it is, when people also think, oh, we can put that right toward raises, that's not an accurate statement, because the next year, that's like, that cost and again. So just remembering, anything that, and it's not raises, it's any expense that we need that's reoccurring. We just, somebody used the word raises, but it's any reoccurring cost. And then the other thing to keep in mind is, how did we get to the $20 million deficit this year? Same kind of conversations I'm sure happened five years ago, 10 years ago. Well, it doesn't really matter, it's just a little bit this year. It doesn't really matter, it's a little bit next year. And that's how we get into a $20 million deficit. So just for thoughts, because you're not voting on anything today, I thought it was very wise to have this conversation today, to give everybody a chance to think. But it's also not right for me to sit here and not remember, how, how did we get here? I've listened to it all, we don't want to get there again. And then the other thing that you heard the, this company share, when districts have said zero and zero, now what are they doing? 12%, 12%, 17%? And I think you mentioned a district with 31%. So when you say zero, just remember, zero sounds okay, but then where are these same districts just a couple of years later? Now you're hitting up retirees, now you're hitting family, 0012, 0017, 0031. So how do people's finances work? It's up to you. It's how you want to decide. But I think that picture needs to be a whole picture, just a quick little summary. And again, thank you all for the, what's, I can think to be very complicated, but yet, you know, you've made it very easy for us to follow. So again, thank you.
And really, our target for 26 is 36 million. 36, not 32. Yeah. Right, the current year's 32.
The next year, you're really...
It's 18 million. Yeah, 18 versus 16, right.
Right. Get it.
May I?
Yes, Ms. Terry.
I just wanted to make one clarification. The retirees do pay their whole amount into the fund. So the district is not subsidizing them at all. However, when we look at it, many times the retirees, what they, we are paying out for the retirees could be more than, than what others are. But I just wanted to make that clarification, that the district is not subsidizing the retirees at all.
And that's really like what the challenge is for a lot of the folks that have family coverage, is the district covers 100% of the employee costs, but nothing towards the family. Because that was a shocker to me, because I, I had all of my work career covered under Alachua County's plan. And so Alachua County pays a portion of the employees, as well as the family coverage. And here, the, the insured, if they carry family or dependent care, you have to pay that portion for them. And so that is a very, that's, that is a challenge, I know, for our lowest, lowest earners, the employees at the lower end of the pay scale. But that's the model that we have here of, and didn't just happen. And I think if you, even if you go back and you try to change that, that is going to be a cost to the district. And so that's a cost to Alachua County. I had actually, when I, shortly after I joined the board and was asking about health insurance clinics, they actually got some information and they kind of compared it with what the, the cost to the county for covering a portion of family and dependent care. And they compared that with what the district is paying. So like I said, we just have to remember that, that one, we have this pot of money that comes in every year, and it's, we, it's very hard to put our finger on it as to what it's going to be, because it's up and down. Usually, usually, like, the percentage rate they may say is, it may increase a certain percent, but that it's really not keeping up with CPI or the increase in expenditures, the expenses. And so we're having to try to balance all of that with the demands of folks saying they want a pay raise. So sometimes the funds may, we are looking at how to spend the money in covering the necessities of what we have to do to operate, as well as trying to, to do that. So I think, you know, all of us are advocating, and not just advocating with us, I think the folks have to advocate with the people who set that millage, that require local effort for us, so.
Yeah, so I know, Ms. Playback, you mentioned about, what did the contract say? So I think, Mrs. Terry, I could be off, but I don't think I am. So the contract says that this is something that gets negotiated because it's money. If it was a set zero, you wouldn't have the choices that the, the union is bargaining with. So the contract doesn't say they get zero. The contract says they're allowed to negotiate this with us. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here today. It would just be zero. Just...
Yeah, and just like, one last thing, like, it is something that other school districts do too, but I know it's something I, we've talked about, Dr. Patton, about actually having, you know, free health clinics for employees, that they do to actually reduce medical costs. And I think that's definitely something we should start looking into in the future. I, I don't know why we don't already do it, to be honest with you.
It was discussed, it just kind of got halted with the change.
Yeah, yeah. So it's definitely something we should start like pushing on too, just considering all the increase in healthcare costs. And I do just want to like emphasize too, I know we talk a lot about, we talk a lot about like, you know, finances for us and everything, and what really is fiscally responsible. I do also want to point out though too, that, you know, it's very difficult, near impossible for a first-year teacher to qualify for an apartment on their own in this town. They have to have roommates, they have to live in college housing, and I'm sorry, if you're a 28-year-old, I don't want to live with a bunch of 21-year-olds. And so we have to take that into account too, of actually how expensive it is to live in Alachua County Gainesville. So I just really wanted to just point that out and make sure we're all aware of the fact that it's harder and harder for our employees to actually live where they teach or work.
Sorry. And I, I mentioned, this will be the third time I've mentioned, it's just, there's only so many things I get to do at one time, because we just have a lot of issues on our plate. But this is another area I intend to tackle. So I mentioned that we came through having done a pathways program. It was huge for us, huge. We went like seven or eight years with zero cost of interest, or healthcare costs, because ultimately what it did is, odd-year, even years, you had to go for X number of tests, annual physical, blood thing, X number of years, colonoscopy, if you qualified for it, whatever it all was. But the point was, if you didn't, then you didn't have the enhanced health ways path. But what happened was, it caught so many things that then our self-insured school district did not have to pay for those. So exactly what happened, because we, we followed a year behind... So exactly what happened, because we, we followed a year behind Naples Community Hospital. They're the ones that brought it to us. We didn't invent it. We just followed their lead. And they said exactly what they told us. It spiked one year of a million, and then it stopped like for seven years. So let's not just get totally wrapped up in here. There are other things that we can do to help not have to have costs, or have these costs be lesser, and people actually are healthier. If you had a higher BMI, you literally had to meet with a coach three times to try and start to learn to eat better and have habits. So there are other things we can do than just do this. So it's another thing I've mentioned that I want to try and look at, but, and it actually helps people be healthier. There is a good thought.
The City of Gainesville has a wellness program.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea in general. Like, I know other countries implement that too, even giving like people rebates for being healthier. I think that's a great idea. One thing I do want to read out is actually from the employee contract. And it really does state that "The Board will continue to pay the employee portion of their premium for each eligible teacher. Any future increase in that cost of insurance will be paid by the Board from funds that might otherwise be available for salaries and other benefits, and will be considered a part of the overall compensation package." So it really does say in the contract now, and yes, we negotiate it every year, but as of now, as the contract states, we do pay the employee portion, and we have to offer that.
It also said, if I heard you correctly, that that comes out of any other funds that would be for pay increase, okay?
Right, right. Yes, but it is in there, and it's negotiated every year.
Well, I, so we can, but don't, don't, I don't want you, want that to be misconstrued as the Board would just pay for it, and it's not. Because you got to realize, there's a finance set of funds, and it does have to be negotiated in total. So you don't get, you don't get a 0% health increase, health insurance increase...
Right, that's...
...as well as a pay increase. You can't, there's a, there's a finite amount of money.
I understand. I'm just saying that like, that we do have to offer essentially, as the contract states right now, some type of no-cost plan to employees. And I know in the past, we've offered a no-cost, and hey, you can have a better insurance plan if you contribute. I think it was like $56 every pay period. And last, when I was an employee, taking, and I didn't opt out with the school district, I did take that higher-cost plan, I recall that. So I mean, it's not like it's something we haven't done in the past, to where we've offered a, hey, you can pay more to have a better plan.
Right, it's, it's a no-cost, but the difference is, it doesn't say that it's a zero increase. That's the difference. That's the part that has to be negotiated.
All right. So if there is no other, no other board discussion, we will close this out and go thank you to the Bailey Group for coming. Thank you, Tara, for coming and for sharing. Ms. Terry, thank you all. Everyone. A C E A, thank you. Did you have something?
She, she needs to...
Oh, okay. I'm going to take a five-minute recess before the next situation. Okay. Okay. Go ahead.
Exactly, right. I could feel like an elf.
I was ready to plow through. Let's go. Turn the mic back on. So we're ready to reconvene. All right, so Attorney Delaney is getting set up here. The next item on our agenda is public participation at board meetings. You're going to present from there, Attorney Delaney, or you're going to do it from your seat? You're going to do it from there?
If whatever the board budget is, and advance the size of the board easily.
Okay, all right. That's fine.
Hopefully, y'all will have a copy as well.
I do, we do, yes. They gave us a copy.
Yes.
I'm going to need you to speak into the mic, and it's okay if you pick it up.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. Good, good reminder from this side of the podium. Well, understanding that we've gotten a lot of information, and certainly don't want to take up too much of the board's time, but given the fact that we just updated our public comment policy, I thought now would be a good time to remind the board and our community members who may be watching this about the, the new policy and sort of the standards that apply to free speech and public comment issues. So that was the, the idea behind this presentation. So we're really going to break it down into three areas. We're going to talk about just basics of the First Amendment, kind of reminder of how that works in action in a governmental setting, public school setting. We're going to talk about public comment, and we're going to have some, a little bit of training on social media as well. So when we look at Section 1, sort of the First Amendment, and how it really works, when we're applying these words from the Constitution, the First Amendment, we know, protects freedom of speech. It's another way of saying the government is limited in what speech it can prevent. And a second aspect of that is the ability of people to tell their elected officials about their grievances. And I think that's an important word to remember. The Constitution didn't write into it the ability of people to come down and tell their governor officials their thoughts or their ideas. It's their grievances. So it's baked into the concept that people are, may come down here unhappy about something in particular, and something that they want an elected body to change about how they're doing things. So it's, there's this built-in expectation that public officials are going to hear complaints. And that's sort of the environment that we're all operating in. Having said that, the rights that the people have in our country to free speech are not absolute. There are some limits that government can put on speech. For instance, things that help a meeting run in an orderly fashion. So another way of saying this is that the First Amendment doesn't give you to say whatever thought is in your head at all times. And we call that a limited public forum. So really, when we're having the public comment periods during a meeting, that is also a limited public forum. And the watchwords for that are the things that we really need to be enforcing in the limits that we are putting on speech, or come down to maintaining viewpoint neutrality. Whether someone is in favor of how the school board is currently operating, or against it, is pro-this or anti-that, the board is going to be neutral and just here to receive that, those ideas. And we're not going to show favoritism towards one side or the other. And that's really the key to handling all First Amendment issues. And the way we go about doing that has to be shown to be reasonable. And reasonable usually translates into consistent, that we're, we're handling on a consistent way each time these issues come up. So our public comment policy is enforced in a consistent way. If you're not consistent, then the court is likely to find that you're not being reasonable. So this, a lot of this language that we're, I just shared with you here, comes from the Moms for Liberty versus Brevard County School Board case, 2004 case, where community members were challenging certain books or the content of materials that were available in the Brevard County Schools libraries, and wanted to come in and, and read portions of books, or talk about why are these books available. And there were, you know, some very contentious meetings and public comments on that. Initially, and this is a NEOLA policy, which is the same policy Alachua County had enforced at the time, that was the policy that was being challenged. And it's the same public comment policy that roughly half the districts in the state currently have, because that's about what NEOLA's coverage is these days. And initially, at the trial court level, the district won. Summary judgment was granted. The court looked at what had been happening in the meetings, looked at the policy, and said, "We don't need to go to a trial. We don't need to take testimony. This is just plainly a constitutional application of First Amendment principles, the way the policy's written, and the way it's applied." So that was appealed, and the 11th Circuit, mostly based in Atlanta, covers the entire southeast United States. One of the appeals courts that's the step below the U.S. Supreme Court, had a completely opposite conclusion, okay? And they said that, we're going to get into this in a second, but this overview hopefully will be helpful. Not only was the policy unconstitutional, the way it was written, but the way it was being applied or enforced was also unconstitutional. So the 11th Circuit, in its opinion, overturning the, the win for the district at the trial court level, asked the following questions. Was the policy content neutral? Was it applied evenly? Was it enforced in a reasonable way? And did it discourage in any way people from bringing forth their complaints? So it's sort of as-written and as-applied or as-enforced analysis. So similar to language that we have been familiar with and operated in this district for a long time, these were the aspects of the policy that was challenged. One of the older requirements that I think we all understood used to be okay is requiring speakers to only speak to the chair. And the, that also kind of morphed into this idea that you couldn't use anyone's names, that the comments couldn't be personally directed. So it was enforced or frequently asked to speakers only speak to the chair and don't use anybody else's names. Those are things that the 11th Circuit had a problem with and said were not constitutional. If someone's got a concern, they can speak to any of their elected officials that they have here, and there are... and they're, in describing what their grievance is that they want changed, they're allowed to say, you know, "This person is doing a good job," and call them out by name. Just as well, in a viewpoint-neutral way, can they say, "This person is not doing a good job, and I'm gonna tell you why, and this is what their name specifically is too." So, having said all that, there is still the power, if it becomes necessary, the 11th Circuit recognized that, that if a person is being disruptive and disrupting the meeting, they can be asked to leave if they're not observing reasonable decorum. So, the specific elements of the policy that the Moms for Liberty group focused in on and the court addressed was the use of the term abusive speech, personally-directed speech, or obscene speech. So, the 11th Circuit immediately, and this is very common in a First Amendment case, they're going to start focusing on this viewpoint neutrality concept. That's the main watchword for guiding us through all of our First Amendment issues. And they're just case after case, not only in this opinion, but in other opinions dealing with the First Amendment. The 11th Circuit is pointing to the U.S. Supreme Court here from 2001. So, in 2024, when the 11th Circuit was writing this opinion, they're saying, "Look, this has been the law of the land for this country since the Constitution was written, but as an example, here's a more than 20-year-old case where the U.S. Supreme Court, the highest court in the land, told us how we have to handle viewpoint neutrality." And sort of building the foundation for the opinion that the court ultimately wrote and saying, "It's well-founded, because the U.S. Supreme Court told us this 24 years ago. We gotta be viewpoint-neutral." And the 11th Circuit, in its opinion, and these are quotes from the Moms for Liberty case in front of the 11th Circuit, were quoting cases that really focused in on avoiding too much discretion being applied. So, the advice that you get from me during, for instance, public comment is that we just need to be very consistent in how we operate our public comment period, avoiding things like allowing certain speakers to have extra time, but then strictly enforcing the time cutoffs for other folks. So, that would be an example of having too much discretion and not applying it in a consistent manner. So, the 11th Circuit also reminded us that public comment, we can just expect that it is going to be uncomfortable. It doesn't have to be abusive, shouldn't be obscene, but it is not going to be sunshine and rainbows when people are coming down to share their grievances. And the courts tell us over and over that speakers have a lot of constitutional latitude to express uncomfortable ideas. The speech that everybody agrees with, that doesn't need any protection. We don't need any protection for somebody to come down here and say, "Let me explain why Mr. Shelnut was the greatest principal ever at Gainesville High." Everybody agrees with that statement. I say that because my kids went there and I was a David Shelnut fan at the time. But the point being, compliments and things like that are going to be okay. That speech doesn't need any protection. It's gonna be the challenging ideas that we need to make sure that lots of people are disagreeing with. The board still has the benefit of being able to hear, and the person can share. So, the 11th Circuit also reminds us that this offensive speech may well irritate, frustrate, or even offend, but that's the necessary cost of freedom. And the 11th Circuit, again, isn't coming up with this, these quotes on its own. It's not writing this material fresh. It's pointing us back to the U.S. Supreme Court from 2011, in the Sorel case. So, that's another example, the 11th Circuit using this foundation of prior cases to say that it's going to be highly skeptical of local government or any governmental entity limiting free speech in this kind of scenario. And it's also a little different, you know, it's important to keep in mind, this isn't somebody just holding a sign up on the sidewalk, right? This is the public comment period. We're specifically inviting the public to come down and give us feedback on how things are working. So, there's gonna be some latitude in that type of environment as well. So, we've touched on the idea that we need to have a consistent application of the rules. I think that the 11th Circuit was pretty harsh on the Brevard County School Board in describing their application of the board's policy as haphazard. And, you know, this is what the court wrote, asking if the board's approach to this policy was haphazard is like asking if the sky is blue. And I would never want any one of my clients to be called out that way. So, that's why I think we need to be guided by this very tight focus on consistently applying the policy. And this was another quote, again, from the opinion where the, kind of the, the final conclusion where the court said it was not being constitutionally, applied in a constitutional manner, is all of these personally-directed comments. And I think that's the facts that were coming up. The chair was, and Brevard was limiting someone to, someone's ability to speak to other board members or try to address specific situations and individuals by name. And it was allowed sometimes and not allowed others, and that is what created a constitutional problem. Another quote back to the U.S. Supreme Court, the 11th Circuit reminding us again, this is well-established law. These are clear rules of the road that have existed for decades or longer about how we have to handle First Amendment, freedom of speech issues. And it's gonna be tense, no one enjoys being called out negatively. Some people might dislike public praise, but that's the price of admission under the First Amendment. And those are important watchwords for us in this concept. Okay, gotta take a quick reminder. In the First Amendment context, lawyer speech, obscenity has a different meaning than someone writing a bad word on the bathroom stall in elementary school and getting sent to the office, okay? Those are not the two same things. Obscenity in the First Amendment context is a much higher level than a simple curse word, okay? The Miller versus California case from the U.S. Supreme Court in the '70s, they were trying to sort of sort through pornography and other things that are just like way outside the lines of what you might hear in a public comment period. And the Miller test set of, the Miller Court, the U.S. Supreme Court in the Miller case, established this very famous test called the Miller Test with these three elements to it that we've got outlined here. And the key takeaway words is that the speech must lack any serious political value. Like, if you parse the words, and the 11th Circuit is saying that it is going to give a pass if someone strays a little bit into distasteful or inappropriate commentary if the message, the speech taken as a whole, still has serious political value, okay? So, even in this particular example, somebody dropped, as my kids would say, an S-bomb at the public meeting. They used a four-letter word that starts with S, and the court addressed that. The 11th Circuit said, "Though that word is not polite, it's also not obscene." So, it doesn't meet that very high level of lacking any serious political value. So, that's, that's why the court is saying, "We need to take a slower approach and try to work with someone to say, 'Hey, let's stay on track here, let's focus on issues. We're trying to have a professional-level business meeting. I'd encourage you to, you know, avoid that type of language.'" You know, that kind of response, whether it's from me, if I need to be called upon, or if the chair is handling that, those are good things to build into the discourse with the person if they're providing public comment, and we're getting off track in order to try to keep them on track or build a record that they're just not willing to at all provide serious political discourse and feedback to the board. Okay, so, the 11th Circuit ultimately decided that, and this is, again, language from the court, speech restrictions, they must be reasonable, viewpoint-neutral, and clear enough so everybody understands what the rules of the road are. So, what are our sort of takeaways and standards for public comment? I've got five of them listed here. I hate it when people read slides to me, I know you've been provided this, so I'm not gonna read them all to you. If any board members have questions about that, I'm happy to take that. If there was anything, I think a best practice would probably be to include a warning before we need to take action to curtail someone's free speech rights. And that is also referenced in our policy, so we wanna think about that. 877.13 is a Florida statute, is where someone has knowingly acted to disrupt a school function. That, you know, the classic example of that would be staging a sit-in at UF in Tigard Hall so the university administration can't function. You know, that kind of thing could, could lead to a charge of a violation of 877.13. So, that, that is another example of the type of behavior that if the board's not even able to go forward with this meeting, multiple recesses are having to be taken to try to settle the situation down, that would be somebody who would be violating the statute and would be a basis for having them removed after a warning. So, having said all that, just a couple of quick reminders about social media, if no one has any questions. This is Pew Research data that I looked up that shows the growing influence or the methodology of people getting their news from social media. And even though 70% of adults say they get their local political news from friends and family, that's almost the same percentage, 66% who say local news outlets are their primary source. But we've already reached that tipping point where people talk to people they know to get their local news rather than the local news media, and that local news media number is dropping every year. So, social media is kind of filling that void. There are sometimes board member questions along these lines, "Are board members able to take action on a social media page that the board member is responsible for to limit someone's comments or block someone from participating on a page?" And that really comes down to, is it your page as an individual, or is it a public page? The classic example would be if, on someone's first day in office, they come in and say, "Here is the District 12 social media page password. Here is the public information officer and the assistant who's gonna help you update that page." You know, all of those kinds of things. This is a pre-existing page that is available for whoever is sitting in that District 12 seat. That would clearly be a public forum where you wouldn't be able to take these kinds of actions on. But if it were your individual page that has existed for years and you occasionally comment on issues that affect public education or things that the school board is doing, or if it was a campaign page of yours that is not maintained by any district resources, you have much more latitude, because you have not opened that as a public forum. And we know that that is true from the Linky versus Freed case. And it's not often that I get to include fun pictures in my PowerPoints, but I did in this case, because that exact issue is what the U.S. Supreme Court was trying to decide. And this city manager from Michigan included on his Facebook page pictures of his dog Winston. This is not an actual picture of Winston, but I thought he was a good boy, and therefore I included it in the PowerPoint. But the point being is, when you have these type of personal things on a personal page that existed before you took office, you have latitude to address people as you see fit as opposed to something that's a public forum, that you couldn't do things like delete a comment. So, big takeaways from that case is that the citizens' rights were not violated because their comments were deleted and they were eventually blocked by the city manager, because it was the city manager's personal page. No government resources were used. He was the city manager, he wasn't the public information officer. It wasn't his job duty to put out information about the new boat ramp being renovated and so forth. But it's also important that the Supreme Court said that the city manager did not relinquish his First Amendment rights when he became city manager. So, recognizing that elected officials still have some level of First Amendment rights as well. So, my advice to all of you, if you maintain a personal page, whether it was a campaign page that you now use to comment on school business or your personal social media pages, if you put this type of language in it, the Supreme Court said there will be a very heavy presumption that it is not a public forum that has all the restrictions that come with that. And with that, that covers everything that I wanted to go over with the board today, unless there are any questions.
I do have one question myself. Does anyone else have a question before I go? On my slide, Slide 21, Attorney Delaney. The number five? I actually have two questions, but I'll start here.
Yes, ma'am.
Number five there. I'm guessing this knowingly disrupt, but I wanna back up actually before five. Like, so if, in the case one, we have a time for public input, where we receive input according to our policy, with general comments, comments on the action items. Outside of that, if someone is being disruptive, the stance we take is warning first and then removal if they're just blurting out in the meeting?
Yes.
At the time that it's not allowed for citizen input, is what I'm asking.
Yes, ma'am. That is correct. You know, there, being the chairs of a meeting is not an easy task. And it's going to require some judgment calls that we are trying to apply these standards that we've been talking about today. There can, sometimes there will be a place for education if someone is blurting out, because they don't understand what the expectations are. And so, re-establishing what those expectations are, that's something that we are going to work on to assist the board, to provide specific information, reminding the public what those expectations are. And I think I've...
Yeah, I'm wanting to do that. Ms. Green, did we lose Dr. Rockwell?
There we go.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so...
She still there? Okay, ask her if she hasn't, to let us know if she would like to participate, okay? Because I can't, from where we are now, I can't see the hand raise feature, okay?
So, district staff and I am, are working to provide some of that education about how, what are the appropriate time periods and how that is gonna work. We've already got the, the public comment form that's going to provide some of that guidance. We are talking about projecting on the screens during public comment, kind of what the expectations are. And it may be appropriate to continue to sort of reinforce that education thing so we can get, keep the meeting on track. But, but if someone is, continues to be disruptive after a warning, that would be, I think, a legitimate exercise of a restraint on speech.
Okay, thank you for that. And then I had one other question I didn't write down the slide. I think it was consistency, not being haphazard. And I just kind of want, it was like, did we apply our rules consistently and not haphazardly? Our policy. And I wanted to ask, I know, we've had a couple of times where one of my colleagues has said, "I'd like to suspend the rules and do da-da-da-da-da." And I'm wondering, when you said that, being consistently applying the rules, does that kind of open us up to some kind of liability in that somebody may say, "Well, you suspended them this time, and then another time we don't do that"? Is that, will that, although allowable under Roberts' rule, does that kind of get us into this murkiness of, you know, somebody saying, "Oh, well, when it's favorable to you all, you want to suspend the rules to allow this to happen, and then when it's not, you don't wanna do that"?
Yes, I think with any... Yes, I think with any issue, there's going to be two sides to it. So even though the board is acting, I think, and has acted in the past with the absolute best of intentions to accommodate people who have brought themselves to the meeting, you know, taken time out of their evenings, away from their family and so forth, to be here, and the board naturally wants to be responsive to that. I think changing the rules is going to open you up to criticism that whoever's on the other side of what that issue was is, well, you didn't do that for me, right? And so even things like allowing people to speak after the public comment, sign up to speak after the beginning of the public comment period, that could be, well, that's favoritism to one particular group. I think we are in that education period where we're trying to help people understand what the rules are, but we do want to get to a place where the rules are being consistently applied. And of course, the public understands what those rules are.
So thank you for that. I think I just wanted to ask that because I don't want us to, you know, a week from now, the next meeting from now, two meetings from now, that come up and that's an issue. So I think that's really one of the reasons why when we update the, was it 169.1, the public input on that, that we kind of read that and we're all like aware of it and we know as well as to the constituents. And yeah, I mean, I get it. I get the reason why, you know, we may want to do that when we have a lot of speakers or whatever, but I think probably just to not open ourselves up to criticism or liability, it's best that we just follow it to the policy as we have written. And if it doesn't work for us then, and we see that that's not working, then maybe we come back and revise the policy as such. That's, that would be my preference. But I think in trying to follow, follow the policy as it's written will probably, that's, this is the only thing that, well, when I read this right here, haphazard is like asking as the sky blew, I'm like, oh.
That was harsh. And again, that's the 11th Circuit talking, not about us, but talking about, I think, a board that was trying to follow, but this is a tricky area. And I think that was a board that probably had good intentions as well, but was accused of favoring certain types of speech over others. And that's, you are in a deep hole as a governmental body if you're having to explain to a court that's not what you are doing. If you, if it looks like you're violating viewpoint neutrality, you're already way behind on the scoreboard.
Thank you. Yes, Dr. McNeely.
Attorney Delaney, in discussion with the superintendent about comments and where we are going, apparently we have board meeting on Tuesday, the 19th, and I'd like to see between you and the attorney for the school district have a set something by then. Screen, form, and say it at the beginning. I think that would be sufficient enough for any individual. Now, if they come in late, it's still on the form. It may no longer be on the screen, but once those three things have been done, that should be sufficient for our citizens and for the board members as well. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Can I ask a quick follow-up to that? We had a script like that, Dr. McNeely. You and I put that together several years ago when you were chair. And it started along the lines of, welcome, we are glad that you are here, you know, we want this appropriate feedback from the public. I guess my question would be in terms of the sort of script, there are some districts that have that read by the board attorney, and it's much more, these are what the rules are. And then there are some districts where I could do that. It's not my role to welcome people and say, we're glad that you're here. Well, only with the direction of the board would I do that. I think that's more your job to welcome the public in that way. I just, I see that as my role. I'll do it however you want me to do it. I'm just trying to understand sort of the author's voice. Would you like that message delivered from your board attorney or would you rather it come from the chair?
The attorney.
Okay.
I disagree. I would prefer that, I prefer the...
I said, I prefer. When we have a vote on a day that we can vote, then that will be decided. But in my opinion, coming from a legal person, yes, that's how I feel. I hear what my colleague is saying, maybe the chair, but I feel very comfortable with someone with an attorney's name, yes. And we don't have that specification.
Well, whatever we put out there is going to be...
Yes, sir.
Is going to be legally correct.
Surely.
And there may be some value in transmitting the message that I, I'm confident that all of you believe in, that you genuinely want that engagement with the public. You appreciate, even when they come down to say something that's not very nice, you want to know about it so we can get it fixed. So I've maybe heard from two board members, and I know one of them is at least the vice chair right now, who may be chairing a meeting. If somebody else has very strong ideas about how that should go, please get in touch with me.
I do agree that, and I had actually asked a couple of my colleagues, our colleagues from other counties to share what they did because I've watched other meetings and you see how they conduct them. And they've, they come from all over. You have your clerk that may read them, there's some, a couple of districts let the attorney read them, some let the chair read them. But what they all, that I've seen a couple of them do is they also print it on the form as well as having it on the, if they have an online portal, it's there, the decorum expectations. And I think just kind of layering it on would be, I tried to repeat it in the last meeting a couple of times. When I was chair, I often tried to repeat it and tell folks how the meeting runs because there are new people that come and aren't there, you know, all the time. But I'm ambivalent one way or the other. I don't care who says it or whatever, if that's the direction we decide to go. But what I do, I would, I do think it should be on the printed form and with us moving towards the online sign up, it should be on that screen, it should be visible. And I think as well as adding it to the agenda. So you kind of have multiple, you know, layering effect of folks seeing it as to what the expectations are and so that, that no one feels that the rules have changed intermittently. So maybe that's, that's where we could go with there. I'm not sure, Dr. Patton, I'm not sure if I emailed you, it was my intention to let you know that on the sign up form, I think it would be helpful if we add, if the person knows that this is an agenda item that they would like to speak to, that we have that on the sign up sheet versus it just being a sign up sheet to speak?
We have that now.
Oh, it's on there now? Okay, because initial one draft, yeah, the initial one, I didn't see it on there, so that's why I was thinking that. Okay.
Can I ask something?
I haven't looked at that one yet, okay.
I have two things, I have two things I'd like to ask. So in your takeaways and standards, the last thing that you say knowingly acting to disrupt or interfere with the function of the board meeting. I think that leads a lot of interpretation. And I know we're really good about saying, don't clap, you know, during a meeting to show favoritism. Well, what about like the last meeting, snapping fingers? I find that disruptive. What about, we ask them if they want to wave their hands or some other way that doesn't physically make a noise? Because I think that is disruptive, because we're waiting for them to snap, you know, stop snapping their fingers. How about, I know some boards wave their hands like people do if they're like for it. Could that be interpreted as being disruptive, snapping fingers?
It could be, to be honest, it's less disruptive than long ovations and applause. So it's, it's moving in the right direction. I have, I've been doing this for over a decade now, probably almost 15 years. On a contentious issue, I don't think ever asking the entire audience not to clap has worked. I haven't seen it work yet, okay? And so we are, we are trying to respect everyone's right to provide that feedback, but we're also trying to run a business meeting and we're trying to make it so everyone gets their fair chance to speak. So I think moving in them in the direction of something that is not going to turn into, you know, whistles and cheering and clapping to something that is less disruptive is good. You could certainly ask for, hey, if you really agree with this, you could just do a silent show of hands, you could raise your hand and we, the board can quickly see that you agree with that. And if they've got one hand in the air, it's harder to clap.
I don't know if I see the difference between snapping fingers and clapping. I mean, if we let one, why not let the other? I mean, because they, we still have to wait for them to finish. So if, I mean, I...
What I have seen in my experience... I don't wait. I don't wait.
You don't, you don't what?
I don't wait for people to be done snapping.
Oh, oh, oh.
I just keep talking. So what I have seen is, not even necessarily Elacho County, but just...
Yeah.
Other experiences from attorneys from around the state, is that if it's a very contentious issue, there will be long periods of clapping and cheering to the point where the chair can't effectively be heard in calling for the next speaker or moving on to the next item of business. So anything that gets us away from that, I think helps people stay in the room, stay engaged. I know that this board wants to follow the Constitution, and I know this board does not want to ask anybody to leave. And so we're all trying to work on that common goal. One way to do that is to discourage clapping, but if you straight up ask them not to do it, that is rarely effective. So giving them some sort of alternative that is less disruptive is better. It moves us in the direction that we want. And certainly asking people to just sort of silently raise their hand if you really agree with what the speaker just said, that would be another step in the right direction. And I think kind of running a tight meeting, there are things like having the speakers lined up, ready to go, and, and helping people understand, you know, if you do all of this clapping and cheering, you're going to cut into your neighbor's time and, because we're going to, we're going to keep running these, you know, next, next, next.
Okay, and then I just wanted to point out for all of us too, because this is one of the policies that Ms. Terry brought to us when we had to renew these policies. And the policy is 0.167.1, which is use of district issued electronic mail and social, and other social media, which is what you're talking about, other social media. And the one thing that, because I looked this up because this is under our school board obligations or what we're supposed to do. And the one line that I got that I took away from this was on the second paragraph, it said, "Board members have no expectation of privacy when using district issued email or other social media. And social media can be not limited to web mail, text messages, instant messages, websites, software, and internet based applications." So it seems to me that what you're suggesting is absolutely what everybody should do as a school board member, and we should be really careful when we're on social media to protect ourselves, correct?
Sure thing. And I think the key phrase in there was district issued, and so...
District issued or other social media, it says. So, you know, I mean, that's how it reads. It could say and other, but it says or other. We could change that. But I'm just saying, in the, in the policy, that's what it says, so...
Everybody...
I just think people should be careful. I mean, for all of us to protect ourselves also. And that, doesn't that lead into what you said about social media?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And Ms. Terry, didn't you, Ms. Terry, isn't this a policy you updated also? It would have been in the zero, 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 zeros.
I don't, I don't recall that being one.
This wasn't, because it was modified in 2021, so I didn't know. So when you, when I got all these papers, this is what I was, one of the things I did. So I was just looking at that. Because I think, I have, I have a daughter who's an attorney for, in Silicon Valley, and she's senior counsel, and they must have 50 attorneys that all they do before they hire something is go into everybody's social media account and see what they've posted. And that's one thing I teach my students, is you don't want to put anything out there that's going to keep you from getting a job. And you'll never know why you didn't get a job. And Courtney says, Mom, you have no idea how many people we turned down because of what they did in high school, and now they're 28 years old trying to get a job in Silicon Valley. So I think that it follows us everywhere. We can't get rid of it. And that's a good thing to teach our students too and our kids that, you know, especially these kids that do all this, I can't do what they do. But I think it's just really a prudent thing because they don't realize it's what's going to affect them. So, thank you. But I think, yeah, I think, I think this is a great list of things that we should try to follow, and we'll do, I think that's good for everybody. Everybody wants to be consistent, public and us. So, thank you.
I am, I got a question, but I'm not sure how to phrase the question, so I'm just going to leave it. I'm not sure, I guess, when you, when you brought in social, social media, I get the point about teaching our students that. I'm trying to figure out, and this, and other social media, like as, how this connects to the issue we just dealt with a few weeks ago.
On Facebook, we, on our pages, which is social media, we should make sure everything's private, and I think that...
No, that's not what he said. He says you have, you have it two separate.
We put in a disclaimer that it's a private page, correct?
I'm saying if it's district issued...
Your mic's not on, sir.
Thanks. If it's a district issued device or social media account, there are going to be different rules that apply. And not in Elacho County, but in local government, well, I mean, in, there is an elected official not on this board who was embroiled in a multimillion dollar or at least several hundred thousand dollars worth of attorney's fees over this exact issue. Was this a personal page? Was it a public page? Could you delete a comment? Could you block a commenter? And that litigation took over a year, and I know that's not how we want to spend district time and resources, and so that was what the reminder was. We've got a U.S. Supreme Court case that gives you a clear pathway forward, how to keep your social media accounts...
Separate.
Separate if they're private versus public.
Yeah. Or it could be a public page and you just have a public, individual page and you have a separate page or separate account for your elected account, elected, like, elected position, duty, or information. And, and you can keep them separate, and one, one can, you can say things on one that you have a right to say, and, you know, because you still have free, well, my point is, is as an elected official, you don't lose your free speech. You don't lose your capacity to speak, I mean, to say which, whatever you will. And, and like the person in the White House now, you know, like the person in Tallahassee, like the person in Atlanta, they can say whatever they want to say with immunity, but I feel that we had something that was just kind of blown out of proportion here, and that's kind of how, why we got here and we're reviewing this. But I don't want this to be, this policy, 167.1, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't interpret it the way, the way you were saying it.
Right, and I imagine our own policy doesn't supersede our own right to speech. So if that's how we're interpreting it, then you're interpreting it in a way that would violate rights. So I, regardless of how it reads, if that's how it's supposed to read, it's defunct.
I think we've got a pretty clear policy. I think it complies with this Linky versus Freed case. That's one of my key takeaways. Elected officials still have First Amendment rights. That, that's why I emphasize that in here, to help maintain that distinction as long as no district resources are being used to support the page. And if you put this kind of disclaimer on there, it's going to make it real clear about what rules apply.
All right, thank you, sir. Anything else? Okay. Okay, any other questions for comments? Okay, thank you for that. Thank you, Attorney Delaney. I...
Ms. Sartin, can I just throw a couple of quick ones out?
Yes.
Sorry, thank you. So, Mr. Delaney, I want to thank you for your extensive time with us, talking through all of these things with our cabinet so we could understand and we could help draft some kind of comments with you too, just for our board too. Like, we asked questions like, since the board chair is the person that's allowed to, is the only person that should be asking someone to be removed, we asked a question like, well, what happens if you're on recess? You're not in the room. So then what happens if something were to happen? So just, you know, we went back and forth and just want to thank you for your guidance because as he shared with us, then we would default for us in our case, you know, just so that you would know, that our chief, who's really the head of security, and he too would follow that idea of a warning to, and I think, you know, as you helped us understand further, that making sure that the people or the person know that they're actively disrupting and interfering with the function of the school board meeting. Your language in your slide is very clear. Your language in your slide is very clear. That helps, I think, all of us. As even then, this follow up to that was, well, the meeting's not happening. So what happens then? So the answer is, they can't start the meeting again if there's interference. So therefore, that would be extended. So, you know, very helpful. I think we've already been on a pathway. Just to always continue on further and educating ourselves, I think makes a difference. And the only other one that we talked about was, does it matter at all to the board what that title is? Like, Ms. Certain, I heard you mention the word quorum expectations. I've heard the word decorum. I've heard norms. Does, does the board have a preference which way Mr. Delaney and I title these? Are these board norms? Are they board expectations? I didn't know if the five of you have any thoughts on.
Were you posting?
Yeah. So we would, like we said, it'd be on the agenda. We would have it on the, when they sign up on the forms, something said at the beginning. And then as people actually speak, have it also on the screen. So if you have some kind of a title that you'd like, or if you want to just leave it in Mr. Delaney's hand, just want to be sure which direction you all five would like to go.
I don't think the semantics really matter to any of us. But I do, I want to get back to just while we're all here, just who is reading the norms out at the meeting. I kind of like the idea that it's somebody with the presumption of neutrality, like Mr. Delaney, like the board attorney, instead of it coming from any of us. I, I, that's the option. So I agree with Dr. McNeely on that. And I really like when Ms. Certain was basically like, yeah, and let's just, it's like basically what a teacher would do, give nobody an excuse to say they don't understand them. You put it on the forum, you put it on the website, you put it in the room, we're speaking it out loud to where it's being said multiple times, and then even repeat it if somebody does violate that norms and is given one warning.
It'd be on the agenda.
Oh, on the agenda.
Said if they speak. And, you know, the other thing that when we looked around at other different districts too, what we noticed, some of them wait to read this per se, whatever you want to call it, only at the public comments. And we kind of all talked about it, thinking like, well, what if somebody acts upright from the very beginning? So I kind of like how you five are giving the direction to say, let's do it right at the beginning also, so that it covers the whole meeting, not just parts of a meeting. And the last one, we thought we'd let the board know too, we've also going to have, how you have a speaker for, or I'm sorry, little lights for the board chair to monitor. We're going to get the matching light so that a speaker could also see when that light goes yellow, a little timer, so they can see it. Because they truly, it's a little hard for somebody to see a light, you know, way up here. So that was a good suggestion too. Yeah.
It'll be, the, you'll put it back here. It'll be hooked to that one, in sync with that one. Okay. 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 So that, that being that, and then I want to circle back. Today, we had our meeting at 1:00. I had to cancel an appointment today. So when we set our meetings, the times was done in our reorg in November. I know you're back in school. But I, my, my preference is to do these early on, or, or at 10:00 because of, that's kind of like what our, we've, we've, the majority of our workshops have been done. My, my preference is to do it at 10:00. But I actually ended up forgetting that, forgot that I didn't, I had a dentist appointment today. So, yeah. When Kim asked me if I could do it at 1:00 today. So my preference is that when we do our monthly workshops, which I'm, we kind of started doing back shortly after I came on the board, because they were just calling us in one by one to discuss stuff like this right here. My preference is we stick with the morning times if we could, because that's what's in my mind. And when I make my appointments, I always try to do them outside of, in the afternoon on Wednesdays if I have to do one, and early on Tuesdays to make sure I can get here for the board meeting. So I know you've.
I generally agree with that. Oh, sorry.
I'd like to say something. I'm not a morning person. Superintendent Patton, like many others, but will not speak out about it. I do not want a morning meeting. I'm looking at you because you said it. And so therefore, we have a colleague now who is employed privately. And so we have to take in consideration with her position as well. So the later, and or maybe the better thing to have one item, not two and three items on a workshop day, because that, with all of our discussion and all that we need to say, is too late, period. So that is my contention, colleagues, that we take in consideration one of our colleagues and their time where they will get off from work and get here as soon as possible, but never in the morning. And always one or two items, no more than that. But if it's going to be lengthy discussion, then we need to be considerate of our time as well. Thank you very much, Ms. Green and Superintendent Patton.
I think it'd be a good idea to, before we do the reorganization in November, that we actually have a workshop where we actually just kind of decide this as a group, instead of it just being, we show up in November, and then we're just kind of, you know, stuck in whatever we have decided. Because then it allows us to look at all of our calendars, what board meetings work or what doesn't, decide on a time for workshops even then. And then even then, it allows us to discuss the committee assignments, because we more or less just inherit our predecessors. And it's kind of become this really inefficient amalgamation of just whatever, right? So, I mean, I think it's a good idea to just talk this out as a group in October before we reorganize.
I, I agree with you, Mr. Vu. I think that's a great idea. And I know I can't determine what goes on, but I do start teaching at 8:10 in the morning. And I don't get out until my last class is at 3:15. But I can get somebody to cover my fifth and sixth period class. So that's why I was able to get here today. So I could do 1:00. I could ask my AP to cover again for me. But if you have a 10:00, it's really hard for us to get subs in a private school. And I would take personal time to do that. So I would appreciate it if we could do it in the afternoon. But I, I understand, I'm not the majority, so.
So the, Dr. McNeely and Ms. Playback, I, I, I see your points. For me, early, earlier, 10:00 works for me. And that's what it, from, from 2009 until now, I'm not being inflexible, but that's what I've kind of built my schedule around and the things that we do. So I like the fact of us having a workshop before the reorganization meeting in October, where we can talk about the things and how we would, would reorganize. But in November, we decided on 10:00. That's what we did. And we've had some, some, some schedulings to change those in this year. Last year, we weren't, they were just kind of moved all around. But it really, for me, and now having some medical things, when I have to, if I'm having to try to change an appointment, it could be two months before I can get back into something. And there was sometimes when I've had to, there, there were workshops or meetings just scheduled without consulting me. You know, that, I don't know who was asked, but the times were changed and they were, if I had something, it was like I was just SOL. And so that, that, I didn't like that. So but if we, if we do what we said we were going to do, what we voted upon and we agreed upon in November, that works for me. Because I have, I take that black schedule with me, my little book, and I'm making my appointments around my meetings. I, that's what we decided upon. And that's what I agreed to when I, you know, I knew what I was signing up for. So I just thought I would, would, would bring that up. And when we, we come together again, we can, you know, we can do that.
Interesting. Because I asked Ms. Green how I could maybe bring that up for discussion. And she said, I could propose it on the agenda, I guess, and put it on the agenda to talk about changing times. So I sent you an email saying not to reply, but saying if it could happen. So we can, we can discuss it and vote on it. And.
I mean, that's.
If I have to make, if I have to take personal time, I will. So I'll do whatever I need to do until November. So.
Is Ms. Rockwell trying to speak? Yeah. So she just wrote me and said that I prefer afternoon, but I want to be sure that our staff doesn't have to stay late. So I guess I would agree with Dr. McNeely.
Yay.
To start at 1:00. And just before you jump on to that other one, just so you know, I agree with you guys about the committees. It's crazy, not crazy, it's just, it's not the best way under the sun that you just inherit whoever's seats. Because you, Mrs. Playback, might want to do something that's more medically related. Tina might want to do something that had, you know, really it's her accounting skills. You might want to do something that's more long. So what we've done is, we've actually, Mrs. Green spent a little while this year, and she's just polishing it off, to put all of your committees that you're on, anybody's committee that you're bored on, she has it by when they meet, where they meet, the approximate time, how often they meet, that we can actually probably by the middle of September, give you to really look it over and kind of start with the slate wiped clean about what would you like to choose to be on, instead of just what you're doing now, inheriting whomever. And some people want to be on a lot of committees, and some people don't too. So it's really, anyway, I think it'll be great. So we'll have that ready for you guys by the middle of September, for you to be able to take a look at and look at it for a month, and have a bigger discussion in October. I love that idea, because I do think you should get to choose what you want to do.
All right.
She said it. She said it.
Okay. All right. If there's anything else, there's nothing else, then we'll consider ourselves adjourned at 3:41.
Thank you.
Up. Was Dr. Rockwell, was she?